I'm afraid please, but uh, man I do by the door.
It's too hot to have him.
Though he had it here first, it could just throw him back down.
Think you could get moved farther, farther back?
Good evening, welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, August eighteenth. We're gonna have a regular township meeting at seven o'clock. We'll stand up, do the pledge of allegiance, and get the meeting started. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, we have a roll call, please.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Press it.
Trustee McGuire. And trustee man, I understand I stick to that.
Okay, so first thing on the agenda is review and approval of prior meeting minutes. And we have done. A member of a resolution went through last week where they decide doing it word for word again. Okay, uh, old business. Nothing on the agenda for old business. Uh, you might have any old business to want to discuss?
Other than I'd like to tell you guys that I did not get my photos, so somebody one of you guys are gonna have to record or give me a copy of the resolution so I can record. Because I don't have it on my agenda.
All right, Mr. Manns.
Do I need to replace, to replace this stuff in it then?
Yeah, we'll replace a copy for him. Okay, anybody have any old business? Uh, we've got a new business. Uh, on the new business, first thing is the First Baptist Church of Ridgewood Heights, one hundred year proclamation. You have that see?
Yes, it's also in your package, trustees. I'm gonna read the, the, uh, the resolution, and in front of you is the fancy certificate for the, the church. Says the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees hereby recognize First Baptist Church of Ridgewood Heights in commemorative, commem- uh, commemoration of their one hundredth anniversary. Board of Trustees, Jefferson Township, Montgomery County, men at a regular meeting on the eighteenth day of August two thousand twenty at the administrative office located on One Dixapark Drive, Dayton, Ohio, with following members present: Michael McLaughlin, James McGuire. It does say Lloyd Mann, but he's not here today. Whereas September twentieth, two thousand twenty marks the one hundredth anniversary of the First Baptist Ri- uh, uh, Church of Ridgewood Heights, that has a commitment of focus of dignity, respect, fostering personal growth, uh, be developing and empowering people in the community. Whereas First Baptist, uh, Church of Ridgewood Heights is engaged in a passionate pursuing its mission to eliminate hunger for community outreach projects and food drives within the ministry. Whereas September twentieth is designated as the First Baptist Church of Ridgewood Heights Burning, uh, of the Mortgage Day and Church one hundredth anniversary. Now therefore being resolved that the resolution of the one hundred First Baptist Church, birthday of First Baptist Church of Ridgewood Heights, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees does hereby urge all residents to acclaim the occasion and have proclaimed uh, September twenty, two thousand twenty, First Baptist Church Ridgewood Heights, happy one hundredth anniversary. And attached in your package is their letter, uh, that they requested this to be done, and a certificate's been prepared if you so move to move forward. The only thing you need is a resolution number from, uh, Tracy Edwards, the fiscal officer, to be able to make this valid and, and move forward.
It's oh sixty-five.
Oh six-five, so it'd be twenty dash oh six-five for the record.
Moved to adopt resolution number twenty dash oh six-five. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees hereby recognize First Baptist Church of Ri- Ridgewood Heights in commemora- commemoration of their one hundredth anniversary.
Second. So we have, we have a resolution on the floor, oh, uh, two oh dash oh six-five. Uh, we have any questions? We have a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
So if you can pass, write, uh, sign the resolution and sign the certificate.
There's a certificate up there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. McLaughlin.
This is the resolution.
Okay, any other new business? Okay, uh, fiscal officers report. Tracy, please.
As I said before, um, earlier, there's no financial report I put out because I'm working the bills.
Okay.
The only thing I have is I have to get the bills in. There are some invoices and checks in the five cabinets to be signed. Not that many of you guys will make a trip up there, but there will be more once I get these printed out. So I say tomorrow, or Wednesday, I mean Thursday. There'll be some up there for you to sign.
I think we still need to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer's reporting, though it wasn't made, but basically to pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, warrants.
Uh, I was gonna say, I will be mailing them to you, though.
Okay.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. Even though there's no report?
I, I said that, yeah, there's no report. It's just, basically just paperwork to make sure we get the bills paid in case it didn't catch up.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, we have a roll call on the motion to pay the bills.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Okay, so next, uh, resolution, uh, resolution two oh dash oh six-six. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, in cooperation with fire chief, fire chief, we don't have a fire chief, agreed to allow the fire chief to sell the following obsolete fire engine, eighteen dash one-one-seven nineteen ninety-four Ferrari? That's not right. Engine, mid-mouth pump with a thousand gallon tank, had a sale cost of twelve dollars, nine hundred dollars.
Mr. President, this was a fire engine that we took out of service. The trustees passed a resolution, eighteen dash one-one-seven to sell it. Been on go deals since then, and last year we took it over to Brendan, Brendan Lee, Mountain Fire Apparatus. And, uh, we've got three inquiries on it, and one gentleman from Louisiana committed robbery over the phone. Uh, he's flying into Columbus Wednesday night, and I will meet with him eight-thirty, uh, Thursday morning to pick it up. I have the, uh, title here that the fiscal officer and one of the trustees needs to sign, endorse, to transfer to us. Also have a release of liability that if the equipment is sold as is with no express warranty. So we need to pass this resolution to continue on with the sale.
I made motion to adopt resolution two oh dash oh six-six. The one I just stated, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, in cooperation with the fire chief, which we don't have, agreed to allow the fire chief to sell the following obsolete fire engine that we, that, uh, Wilcox has talked about.
Second.
Okay, um. Any questions? Have a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Motion carries. Passes.
Need to sign this release. Has pros.
You need a copy of that.
Release?
And that's, it's on the back of the, uh, the resolution. The sign you. The text. They're assigned, I said you need a copy of that with the, with the title.
Mr. Wilcox, does that paperwork need to be notarized?
This, this does.
The, uh, liability release.
Well, that will be till he, he signs it Thursday morning, so. Do I bring it to you Thursday morning after he signs it?
Okay, so he, uh, the, who's gonna sign this, the buyer?
This buyer.
Okay, um.
Who signed that?
It, it's blank, which is saying specifically that it's as is. Would you like to say it?
That, that's for the person.
Signed it.
Yeah, but that's for the person who's purchasing.
No, this is just the saying it's sold as is, there's no warranty, that's all this one is.
I thought the same thing, just sold.
Like he's like this. All right, will I see that? Yeah. It looks like it, but.
Is this my buyer, the buyer?
Yeah, so I'm done.
This is the buyer, the owner, just standing there. All right, they're just providing, showing me that we're getting a, a release from, from the buyer.
The, the title has that, has that buyer stuff on it too, so it gets notarized.
Okay.
That doesn't need to be notarized, yeah.
Next resolution. Resolution two oh dash oh six-seven. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve the res- resolution certifying the assessment charges for abating nuisance properties to be assessed, to be listed, properties from two thousand eighteen, and request that this two thousand eighteen assessment be submitted by the fiscal officer to the Montgomery County Auditor in a timely manner.
Shouldn't this be resolution sixty-eight, zero six-eight?
No.
This hasn't been done for two thousand eighteen. Oh, there's only a few parcels.
No, this is, this is seven.
Oh, shoot.
It's seven.
Huh?
It's six-seven.
Well, six-six was the Ridgewood resolution.
No, six-five.
Six-five.
Six-seven's correct, that would be correct.
Correct.
Okay. Make a motion, we adopt resolution two oh dash oh six-seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any questions? Have a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I'm supposed to be submitting this over the resolution? Like that?
I'm. I'm not too good on how that works, that's, that's communication between you and the county auditor. I'm not sure how that, how you communicate that with the auditor. Don't you just send an Excel file or something?
I don't have that, that's what I was saying, I don't have an Excel file. I don't have that access to that information.
You know, Steve, what we gotta do there?
The auditor said if you get no, or work in form of steps contacting the auditor's office. And I'll walk it through the, whoever's doing the process. So basically calling auditor's office and helping you through the process.
Okay. Okay, uh, next resolution is two oh dash oh six-eight. Similar to oh six-seven, different year. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve this resolution certifying the assessment charges for abating nuisance properties to be assessed to the listed properties in two thousand eighteen, and request that the two thousand nineteen assessment be submitted by the fiscal officer. That shouldn't be eighteen. Is that misprint?
No.
No.
Okay, and request that this two thousand nineteen assessment be submitted by the fiscal officer to the Montgomery County Auditor in a timely manner.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero six-eight.
Second. Any questions?
If I, I do have a question.
Okay.
If I need the electronic file, who do I get that from? Somebody here did it here.
Keep that down.
Electronic file for this, this data on here. Who has it? I don't have it. I know when I submit, I want to submit the lighting assessment, they want electronic file. So I'm going to assume right now I need electronic file for the, these two resolutions you just passed.
Tony, when we put that together, is it, is it the administrative assistant that has that file?
Yes.
So go to the administrative assistant.
Okay, thank you.
I probably have a copy of it also.
Thank you. Okay, that's the place I have.
Okay, um. Please, uh, have a roll call, roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, um, next one. Resolution two oh dash oh six-nine.
No, seven oh.
Hmm?
Seven zero.
Seven zero?
Yeah. Oh, seven zero.
Resolution dash, resolution two oh dash oh seven oh. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby authorize the fiscal officer to present an assessment for the street lighting district for two thousand twenty to the, to the Montgomery County Auditor's Office. I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution two oh dash oh seven oh.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
And the next resolution is already submitting that now. This information. This one is requesting it to be done, but the other one is submitting it.
What's the difference between the two one? One, you're submitting it, one, you're set, you're presenting it? What's the difference between, who wrote these, who wrote this, what's the difference between?
I don't know.
Uh, let me, you have to certify the, the numbers first as a board, and then you have to pass a second amendment resolution to send it in. So you have to do both.
Okay, so seven oh, what we're doing first is the one that's being sent in to these county auditor.
You're sending two thousand, so on attachment, you're sending two thousand eighteen numbers in, into the county auditor, because that's what's on the attachment here, two thousand eighteen.
The agenda, it, it doesn't, it, it is not correct. Uh, the resolution that was provided was last year's resolution as an example of what you used for this year. You're using the same lighting district spreadsheet that you used last year.
This, this is two thousand eighteen, this is not two thousand nineteen. So this is two years ago.
You were using the same amount for eighteen and nineteen.
This is two years ago, and, no, there's some property.
The same addresses were used.
Yeah, some of the properties are, are not on here. So they're not the same. Each year they send me a list, and they, they tell me, oh, this property doesn't exist anymore. So eighteen has a couple of properties on here that don't exist anymore. So I have a new list, two thousand nineteen, that has some properties off.
So that's the adjustment that you work with the auditor on?
Correct.
So, by passing this resolution, you're giving her the authority to go ahead and assess the proper amount of properties based on what the auditor tells her. If that makes sense, trustees?
Except for the last, we had resolution nineteen oh eight-eight on the last page there, Steve. Um, with the flat rate. Instead of having the different rates, the flat rate, that, that doesn't apply here, or does it?
You talking about on the thick packet or the two pager?
The thick one, the last page.
On the last page of the resolution you're talking about.
Well, we adopted resolution nineteen oh eight-eight.
Right, that, that was the amount that you assessed last year. This year, the assessment amount is fifty dollars. Unless you guys want to change that.
So all these papers are, so, okay.
So in other words, all the properties that were assessed last year should be assessed this year unless the auditor makes adjustments with the fiscal.
Okay, I see that.
This is the next resolution.
Gotcha. Mine, by the way, two page now, I'll follow it, I'll follow it.
I didn't show the front.
Ah, I, that's a, a paper, okay. Okay, I'm good, Steve, I'm sorry, I almost.
That's okay.
Okay. Make adoption, make a motion to adopt resolution two oh dash oh seven oh.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution, any questions?
All right, can you read the header of that?
The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby authorize the fiscal officer to present an assessment for street lighting district for the two thousand twenty, for two thousand twenty to the Montgomery County Auditor's Office.
Thank you.
Any questions? Have a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, last resolution on the paper is, uh, resolution two oh dash oh six-nine. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve this resolution certifying the two thousand twenty street lighting assessment for the lighting district and to be submitted to the Montgomery County Auditor's Office.
So moved.
You making a motion?
Yes.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two oh dash oh six-nine, any questions? Have a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I turned it over so you could sign it.
Okay.
Attached to the listing, a new listing, if you want to flip through it. And she says two thousand twenty has the fifty dollars and the, and the tax, the proper sign, that's that. Trustee McLaughlin has one more resolution. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
We're going to present that during the fire.
Okay. You'll do it during the fire.
We're in new business, let's do it now.
Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, Mr. Wolf.
There you go.
This be seven one, Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Second.
This is a resolution transferring funds for the fire department. We had an increase in insurance premiums. The staff vehicle was added, plus there were other items that the chief found that were not covered on our insurance that he had added. So I believe, uh, Ms. Edwards and Mr. Wolf, I think you were aware of this, but the chief has created this resolution to transfer funds to cover the insurance premiums.
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution two oh dash oh seven one.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two oh dash oh seven one, any questions? Here, roll call, uh, roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is departmental reports, Code Enforcement Department.
Good evening, everybody. My, uh, I did thirty-seven tow inspections, twelve new, and that doesn't count all the high grass stuff. One oh-two Longcrest was a problem for a while, I guess, and, uh, stickered thirty cars there. I was out there today, and there's only about five left. He's, he's cleared pretty much everything up. If they're not gone by end of the week or first of next week, I will tow them, but he seems to be working on it pretty diligently. Uh, the infirmary road project update. The six cases I sent to court were, uh, sent back. They wanted the statutory, they wanted it to say statutory agent, not just his name. And, uh, they wanted identifiers. So I met with Captain Flag, and, uh, he got me the identifiers I needed. So I will be filling those out and taking those, uh, back up there. And I'm gonna meet with Greg Spears, he's the prosecutor. I wanted to meet with him today, but I found out he only works on Mondays and Tuesdays. So I'm gonna try to meet with him next week to discuss just how they handle this there and things like that. I finished the two thousand nineteen weed assessments, which you guys have that. And then, uh, for the residential beautification award, I did choose a winner. The winner is sixteen seventy-six Hopewell. And, um, there were twelve, twelve properties nominated, and those properties, other than the seven, sixteen seventy-six Hopewell, are thirty-three Cherokee, one-twelve Davenport, two thirty-five Calumet, two thirty-six Calumet, two twenty-one Knox, two eighty-nine Oberlin, forty-nine oh one Erickson, forty-nine seventy-seven Hackett, fifty thirteen Ballard, fifty nineteen Ballard, and fifty twenty Ballard. If, uh, you guys get a chance, you have the copy. I would suggest going out, looking at some of these properties. Some of these folks really do a good job and go above and beyond of what they need to do to, uh, take care of these properties. I'm hoping they get, the winner will get a yard sign that Adrian designed, which he's done a very great job, that they'll put in their yard, and they'll keep the yard sign for, um, I don't know, lack of a better word, prize. And I'll be presenting them back sometime next month. And that's all I have, if you don't have any questions.
Is that Hopewell property, like the corner of Dayton Liberty and?
No, it's pretty much where, um, Hackett comes out, it's between Hackett and Dayton Liberty. It's, it's, there were some really nice places. But, but that's the one that, that I felt was the best.
You mean Derby, right? You mean Hackett and Derby or Dayton Liberty?
I'm sorry, Derby.
Okay.
Okay, next is sheriff's department.
There's a bill report tonight, so.
Building department?
Uh, in front of you, Mike, is a payment, if you need to register in and get it.
Here's a check for a hundred dollars, Tracy, for four oh one six oh Germantown Pike, accepted by John Calligan. It's commercial fees, change in occupancy for a commercial building.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Besides that, we have a report, Steve?
No, you have, I think you have this reported in the packet. But, no, no report.
Okay. Uh, road department?
Uh, trustees, you have your, in your package, you have the road report, there's packets back here on the table for the residents. This, that month, the payment or the report is five pages long. You can read through that and see all the activity that your road department is doing. So I only have one question. We're waiting on, and we've been without about sixty days, we've been without the tractor with the boom arm, the David of Moback weeds, their tall, uh, tree limbs, rideaways and that kind of stuff, and we're waiting on a payment that you approved two weeks ago, but I'm not sure where that stands. We, the Skiki tractor is waiting on a payment so they can release the tractor, and our road department really needs it back.
The P O hasn't been signed, it's in the cabinet.
So it's still, okay, it's still there, okay, so trustees, please get up there and sign that P O so we can get the tractor back so they can do what they've been, wished they would have done over the last sixty days. That's all I have.
I, I take that back, Mr. McQuire signed, need another trustee sign.
That's all I have, thank you.
Lauren Purvis?
Good evening, everyone, trustees, Mr. Wolf, and citizens, appreciate you coming out tonight. Chief Lutz prepared this for me. Ms. Edwards, here is chief's credit card and a township owner's flash drive, he wanted me to pass that on to you. Chief asked that I give everyone his best, he expresses his well wishes for the citizens and the township and employees, and he appreciated the opportunity here and wishes nothing but the best. Uh, this past period here, the chief's provided the daily I C S two oh eight safety briefings to all the township personnel. He worked on paying the bills, attended the fire chief's meeting and the regional dispatch center meeting via Zoom, completed many emails, responded to those, continued to report changes on our Facebook page for the COVID nineteen issues. Uh, the new ambulances are ready for pickup, they are ready on September first, they will be inspected by our people. Uh, he worked with the.